We will take a roll call vote on that.
Simmonsma?
Aye.
Van Berkom?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bishop?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That motion carries. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. First of all, congratulations to the Huron Dance Team for finishing fourth in the state tournament on Saturday and to the Cheer Squad for finishing ninth. Anytime we're in the top 10 in the state of South Dakota, that's an incredible accomplishment, so congratulations on that. Congratulations to the following for their ESD accomplishments in Boys Golf. Landon Roberts tied for sixth and Marty Botell tied for ninth, which are all ESD. And the Boys Golf Team finished third in the ESD at the Broadland Creek Club. The Huron Dance Teams both finished second at the ESD, so congratulations to all of them. Congratulations to the Huron School District Transportation Department for being published in the September issue of School Transportation News, a national publication, for their usage of the Z-Pass system. Congratulations to the Huron Boys Soccer Players, all conference selections. Bate King and Ekutu were 2018 Boys All ESD Soccer Players. Carson Duba was a 2018 Honorable Mention. Congratulations to Courtney and Cody Elke on the birth of their third child and welcomes the family little girl, Jovi Anne, welcomed by her brothers Keaton and Hendricks. Congratulations to Director James Stukrath and his staff for the outstanding work of the Huron High School Marching Band for winning first place in their class at the March of Meridian held in Yankton. The band also won Best Color Guard, Best Wins and Sweepstakes Field Grand Champions. They obtained the highest field score of the entire competition. Congratulations on a job well done. And if you happen to be listening to this live over the Internet, their exhibition on all of this quality work is in the arena this evening at 7:00 PM. Congratulations to Junior Bate King for being named the 2018 Second Team All-State Soccer Team. And I'm sorry I didn't pick that up when I was doing the Soccer Honors earlier. Congratulations to Sylvia Katner and Sarah Christensen seniors for being selected to the South Dakota Dance Coach Association for not only academic all-state, but also they were First Team Athletic All-State Award winners as well. And the final congratulations, I'm going to offer a professional courtesy to my peer, Beth Foss, who will head to the podium and take care of those honors. Beth, could you just make sure that the microphone red button is out? And we'll wait till I see on the camera that we've switched over to you because that's earlier than we usually are there. You're a good job with the staff, thank you. Mrs. Foss, it's all yours.
Okay. I am proud to introduce Erica Boomsma, a 4th grade teacher at the South Dakota, as the South Dakota, uh, I'm just getting blah, as the South Dakota Teacher of the Year. Erica is a dedicated elementary teacher in the Huron School District. For 16 years, she has had the honor of empowering all students to become lifelong learners and to strive for their dreams. Serving on many committees and as a mentor, she also acts as a PSYOP coach. Creating a happy, student-centered classroom is very important to Erica. With a strong belief in experimental learning, she believes in bringing learning to life with innovative activities to improve student understanding and retention. Her greatest joy in accomplishments found in her students' enthusiasm to learn and their successes as they achieve things they never thought they could, all while learning as a family without bias. Erica loves her profession and even more the students she teaches. She believes that every child, regardless of race, gender, creed, or socio-economic status, can learn. And she advocates that all students deserve a wonderful education and the opportunity to succeed. There is nothing in this world that she would rather do. For Erica, it is her dream come true. Her lifelong goal fulfilled, she is a teacher. Now, I want to add some things. With this award, Erica has received $6,000. The $6,000, she can use whichever way she would like to. Also, she will travel to California to meet all of the other state winners at the Google Headquarters. In the fall, Erica will travel to Princeton, attend a college football championship. We don't know which one, but, and (laugh) I wish we did.
Rodney knows what that means, but I don't know what that means.
But she's gonna go.
I'm gonna go.[322.38][322.38](laugh)
And can earn an educational doctorate, all expenses paid except for her books. Erica was also awarded a $1,000 SDEA Technology Grant to be used in the classroom, $1,000 honorarium from the Board of Regents to speak at five educational engagements, and $250 from the state of South Dakota. Let me again introduce Eric Boomsma, who represents Huron and the state of South Dakota as the South Dakota Teacher of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause.[371.81][371.81](applause)
There's not much more to say.[389.12][389.12](laugh) No. What Beth read to you was my biography that I had to write for our application. And so, this process began about a year and a half ago when I was nominated to be Teacher of the Year in Huron. And then, when we filled out that application, everything kind of turned out the way it did, then I was asked if I would like to represent Huron and try for the regional win. And so, I said, "Yeah." And I think my exact words were, "Throw my hat in the ring and we'll see." So, then you fill out more, another application that is, I mean, it's really big. So, it's not just you're filling in your name, but you have to write a biography and then you have to give five very long answers that they will cut you off at, certain amount of words, so 750 and 500. And I just kind of figured my odds would be what they are, so I just thought, "Well, I'm gonna do my best." And I thought, "The best thing I can do is express what we do in Huron." And so, the first time, you know, it was a little more about you trying to be, you know, in your town, that was just the best. And then, it became more about making sure that I represented our district and our schools and what we do. Because what we do here is very different from a lot of other places, but not so different from the rest of the world. And not so different from the rest of America. But, when I won, then I won there, they asked if I would like to try for the state Teacher of the Year 11. And I said, "Yes." So, I filled out another application. And that became a little different because then my emphasis was not on me, and it was even less, like, more about the school, but now it was more about my town, more about my city. Because now you're with the rest of the cities in South Dakota and you just want to represent yours as best as you possibly can. And I did not know how it was all going to turn out, and they lined us up and they called my name, and then I cried.[501.12][501.12](laugh) And then, you know, they say all of these things that are gonna happen and your mind just swims, but, you know, I've been afforded a lot of opportunities through this and it was worth every word that was written. And it means the world to me because my nomination, even in Huron, was, you know, from a mom and a grandma and a teacher. And then, my nominations were from former students I had, who are all EL students or at-risk students, who are really doing well because of everything all of us do in the district, not just me. And to be honest, this has very little to do with me. When somebody asks me, "Well, why did you think you won?" And I have to be honest, I don't really think it had, and it's not false modesty, I don't think it really has so much to do with me. It has everything to do with us. Because we do amazing things here. And now, the rest of the state is starting to see more of a boom in diversity. And before, they didn't, I don't know if they realized, but now they do. And they would like more help, and I think we're all ready to offer that to anybody who wants to come, you know, to us. And we're more, we're again in that leadership role in Huron. So, it's been really nice.[571.16][571.16](laugh) Anyway, I'll do my best. I have to fill out another application for the national one.[576.79][576.79](laugh) And that is what we are working on tonight. So, the kids are gonna play on the iPad.[581.29][581.29](laugh) I'm gonna type. But, do you have any questions or no?
I just note, while the board's warming up, if the research was accurate that was in the pamphlet, because Beth and I drove down to support you that night, that this is the first time, the second time in the history, and the first time since 1984, that Huron has had the state winner. In 1984, it was a lady that means a great deal to me and to a lot of people in the room, Dorothy Dubs, who is retired but still alive and in the community. So, I told Dorothy that you're now accountable to her to join rare company.
That's some big shoes, though. She's good.
We're all very, very proud of you. If the board has any questions or comments, I yield to the chair.
Can I, can I say one more thing? When Mr. Nebelsek and I were sitting there with her parents, I'm one that really is a cheerleader, okay? And when Erica won, I screamed. No one else screamed in the whole place, and I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." And this was me to Mr. Nebelsek. She won, she won.[654.16][654.16](laugh) Now, I've never been able to hit my supervisor, so thank you very much, Erica.
Not only that, if we're gonna add to the entertainment, she's hitting me, telling me she won while I'm trying to take pictures.[665.12][665.12](laugh) So, if the pictures look like this, that is AK Mrs. Foss.
Meanwhile, my mom was clapping.[672.82][672.82](laugh)
And out of sheer fairness, your husband was also there.
He was freaking out.[680.12][680.12](laugh)
Just wanted to clarify.
Rodney was there.[683.12][683.12](laugh) So, thank you very, very much.[686.04][686.04](applause)
And I think I timed it so that that's the end of my congratulations, but let me check to... Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to reports to the board. Our first is the Classified Employee of the Month presented by Laura Willamson from the middle school.
And then, you can give her the box for when she leaves. Okay.
So, we are very happy to have Tracy Steele appear as the Huron Middle School Classified Employee of the Month. She was nominated by her 6th grade team, so I'll read some of the comments that they had to say about her. She is the most upbeat and happy person I've ever worked with. She does a phenomenal job with the students. She not only helps her kids, but she also helps other kids in a way that make each student feel like they are the most important person to her. She helps with anything that we ask her to do and does it all with detail. Tracy's very organized, efficient, quick, on her toes, and is extremely helpful. She is a person in our school that gets all the kids to feel comfortable going for help for any reason. And Tracy is an employee that all others should use as an example of how to go about their day. So, like I said, we are very excited to be able to present this to Tracy.[791.12][791.12](applause)
All right. Thank you, thank you, Tracy, for all you do.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tracy.
Hey, we'll now move on to the good news report. This is from the Buchanan K-1 Center. We have about half the Buchanan staff here, I think, present today to give this report, so I assume it's gonna be lively and entertaining.
Erica, you guys might want to move now just to make it work for everybody. Thanks. You can sit in their chairs if you want to watch, Erica, because that'd be fine.
Well, first, we had to fix our slideshow because not only was Mrs. Foss hitting Mr. Nebelsek, she was also hitting the computer.[848.12][848.12](laugh) Kindergarten staff is gonna present on the ABC Boot Camp, so I'm gonna pass that over to them at this point.
Yeah. There's so many of us. I'm Leah Youngman, another kindergarten teacher. And ABC Boot Camp was created and developed by Craig Smedley Warren, and he is from the Kindergartens Mordecai.
And I'm Carolyn Westby, I'm a kindergarten teacher. We chose this because it was research-based, it was rigorous, it introduces all 26 letters in the first 26 pages.
Okay. I'm Pauline McCrigan, I'm another kindergarten teacher. And why we wanted to do this is because we wanted to have an accelerated introduction to the letters and sounds so that we could get going for the kids who were ready to go and on target to get ready.
And I'm really, the reason we wanted to use Boot Camp was to identify our students for different groups, such as our intensive, our buffer, our enrichment, and our intervention, where they get little, smaller groups in some more one-on-one directions.
I'm April Allers, a kindergarten teacher.
I'm Renee Pearson, also a kindergarten teacher.
And Robin Axman.
I'll be talking about the circle map, which is one component of the ABC day. Each day, we introduce a blank map like you see here with a letter in the middle, and we start by telling the kids the sound. We practice the sound. We introduce the action that we use for the sound. And then, we tell them the name of the letter. And we do that because it's supposed to make an easier connection to the writing component of our day. Next, the teacher asks the class to see if they can come up with words that begin with that sound. So, we don't know what we're going to draw that day. We're kind of on the spot and we draw really fast, it's like Pictionary. And when we're finished, then the kids help us identify that beginning sound, we write the letter together, and then the teacher will write the rest of the letters in that word.
Okay, so I'll talk about the handwriting pages up here, up in this corner. So, what the kids do is they, it's just an introduction, tracing the letters, they're getting used to how the letters are formed and everything. And then, we have a circle chart underneath, which my class, they either have to do three or more, and they draw the picture, and if they're at a higher level, they're able to write the word that I wrote underneath their picture, as you can see. And it's just a really nice way to, like, thicken your day, and so they're more, they're getting more added to their day with that letter. They also do the letter books, so it's a nice introduction showing Y is for yellow, Y is for yogurt. So, just those things that are just reinforcing the letter and the sounds.
And then, the kids all make a crown or a silly hat with a picture of something that starts with that letter, and so it's fun, you see those all over the building all day, so.
Forgot yours, Mrs. Foss.
I know. They made one for me today, so I forgot to wear it.
Some data that we collected last year, we assessed the kids prior to starting Boot Camp, and overall, they knew 23% of their letters and sounds. Then, we did a post-assessment after the 26 days of Boot Camp, and we increased to 45% of all letters and sounds, which is a gain of 22% in just 26 days.
All right, so now, we're gonna talk about Buffer, just because it, Boot Camp kind of leads right into Buffer. So, we do Buffer Tuesdays through Thursdays every week from 2:30 to 3:00.
To qualify into this, they need to know 12 to 14 of the 20 letters and sounds, and then the letters change each week with the curriculum.
In 2017, we had 75 first graders that needed the WIN in first grade, and in 2018, 40 first graders needed it.
And WIN is the same thing as Buffer for first grade, so that's this year's data. So, it'll be interesting to see if it cuts down just because of this class or if we can sustain that.
I'm Brandy Knippeling, the kindergarten ESL teacher at Buchanan. And some of the things that I've seen or we've seen that help our ESL students is right away, they're seeing that letter connection and then the vocabulary pictures to go along with it right away. And also, because I can't see 75 kids every day, these kids are being right away put in those, put in those targeted groups like Buffer, Intervention, Enrichment. And so, they're getting the help that they need right away from the start of the school year.
And just one last thing is, at our beginning of the year meeting, we brought up ABC Boot Camp, and the first grade teachers started clapping, and I looked, I said, "Is something matter, what I do?" And they are actually applauding these ladies right here for all their hard work. And so, if you want any data, that's the best data. So, good job. Questions?
I want to make some comments, and then if the board has questions. I've been way more involved in this, and Peggy Hines knows this, I just don't know how much the teachers do, but when you see our data and we start to catch up in grades four, five, and we hit the state averages at seven, we have such a huge gap with where zero is, where they enter us as first-time children in our school district. And Peggy and I have seen the entry score of the people we've never met go down each of the last three years. So, this immediate intervention has, this Boot Camp intervention on the ABCs has so much more to do with getting a foothold on everyone being introduced. A lot of kids that start school and come from families that have been involved in education, the moms have been involved in education, they come in with the alphabet being something natural from about the time they were four years old. And now, other children come in and the first day is their introduction. And so, I have to tell you that compared to the orthodox teaching methods that have been there for a long time, that you gradually build the alphabet, the fact that we hit it as hard as we could, I'm with the first grade teachers, that the difference it's made at where our starting point is gonna be. It's a huge change, and as your board is passionate about in the goal-setting, what do we do to change teaching and learning? This Boot Camp has been huge. And then, the word Buffer is something that you'll hear K through 12. I really think the board already knows this, so this is for the audience that's listening, but we went into intensive training on what can we do differently in the district, K through 12, to identify students who are not learning and do something about it rather than just note that they're not learning. And that's where the word Buffer comes in, is to create buffer zones. And so, all of this starting at our very, very first grades and then building up is something the superintendent gets really excited about, so I just didn't want this moment to pass without giving you my spin. And if I got anything a little bit incorrect, that's because I'm a big-picture person and that's set of the specifics. So, Peggy, correct me if I, if I got anything. But, this is a big deal because of our unique starting base if we're gonna have everybody catch up in the race. This is a big deal.
I actually have a comment. And I was just talking about this with Sophia. I remember sitting in kindergarten class in Mrs. Joan Beller's class and seeing the alphabet up on the walls, and I'll be little animals and learning it kind of throughout a longer process. And I think it really does speak to the innovation and capability of Huron teachers to create a system like this in less than, I don't know, 12, 13 years, it's my age, but, and I really do, I mean, this just sounds wonderful for kids who, you know, English is their first language to kids who isn't. So, that's awesome.
As someone who's always been a proponent on the board of every child reading at grade level, and especially at elementary, I've always believed passionately that we have to make sure our students are reading at grade level as soon as they can, because that affects their education so much. So, it's just great to see that there's innovation going on, you know, in the kindergarten level, and really trying to hit it hard right away so that our students have the best chance they can going forward. I just, that's wonderful to see. So, thank you for all your work doing that. That's great.[1446.54][1446.54](applause)
Make sure your button's out.
Got it. I think it's really cool that you guys are making sure that every student is getting a chance to learn. Your buffer zones are a great idea. Even at the high school level, we see that a lot of kids fall behind from the curriculum, and seeing that you guys are trying to incorporate this learning to every single student is amazing, so props to you guys.
Any other comments? Any other final comments from you guys?
No, I just appreciate, I have a great staff, and they've done a wonderful job with this. It's not easy, so, thank you.
And thank you all for taking the time to come up here and presenting this for us. That's great, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. These proposals will all stay for the rest of our super exciting meeting.
That's, I'm sure, I'm sure that, because we have our most exciting report, the superintendent's report's coming up next.
Yeah, that's what they've all, that's what they've all been waiting for.
I'm sure they're all waiting for this one. This is the highlight of the, of the meeting, that's right.
Yep.
Good thing that we won't report on the number of attendees after this point.
That's right. This actually happens at most of the meetings that I'm ready to talk.[1521.25][1521.25](laugh) They'll all just leave right at that moment, so.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report, then.
Okay. There's two or three things that I want to note. We have a great relationship with our veterans in town, and so, we just note that when Veterans Day, and you touched it on the calendar, but we just note that when Veterans Day is on Saturday or Sunday, we run our educational programs on the day before so that kids know what Veterans Day is, et cetera. And then, we do not have school off during that time because the veterans have rented Sunday as their day for their programs on the 11th day at the 11th hour. And so, what happens to the calendar on those unique years, which was a part of the compromise to get the calendar after Labor Day and finish at appropriate time, is during those years when we don't have Veterans Day during the week, then that moves to the Wednesday of Thanksgiving. So, this is one of those years when the Wednesday of Thanksgiving, we're not in session. I just wanted to, the board knows that because you get the calendar, but for people that would be listening. So, we do have school, as you noted before, on the Friday and Monday after Veterans Day, and we run our school programs to make sure they understand the importance of the day. But then, when Veterans Day is during the five days, then we take it off and provide our facilities. Okay. That is one of the things I wanted to make sure. And then, the other thing I wanted to focus on is that with all of the improvements in the way that we deliver education at the middle school, we had an unintended consequence, which has probably been a safety concern for a long, long time, and that is the crosswalk that is immediately down the sidewalk from the bus loading zone, running parallel to the middle school, the bus loading zone, and it leads to the high school. And we have, because of the way our gymnasiums and our practice facilities are set up, we have 7th and 8th graders that are coming over for practice. We have a lot of children of staff members who are coming from the grade school or high school over to their parent in the middle school, or from the middle school, or getting off of the bus and coming to a parent at the high school. And all of the, just general traffic of kids getting to the buses, et cetera, that we are attempting to hire a crossing guard to be at that corner. What's increased the traffic is that we correctly moved the 6th grade to the east end of the middle school. And by doing that, we have a lot of parents using that east loop, which is wonderful. That's what we wanted. But that has added to the congestion right at that corner of the parking lot, the Tiger Stadium parking lot, the 6th grade loop, and the high school parking lot. And so, we are attempting to add hours to a para, either from the middle school or high school, that is not at their 40 hours, in order to have a crossing guard out there and add a level of protection. That was a joint request that came to us from Mr. Radke and Mrs. Willamson. The middle school administrators have unselfishly handled the responsibility for the supervision of that bus loading zone, even though it's K-12 for years and years. And we just cannot add the crosswalk to that. And so, Mr. Radke, Mrs. Willamson is at parent-teacher conference tonight. Did I accurately describe the dilemma and what we're attempting to do? Okay? And our SRO, Officer Van Deepen is here, and I'm sure you've seen the traffic at that corner, so. So, that is, that's something that I wanted you to be aware, that we are trying to rectify with extra hours. And as you all know, I use the format of people watching this on television to let them know about that. So, if they happen to be someone who is not part of the school system and can avoid Arizona during that time, that would be very helpful to us. And if they are picking up a child, whatever, crossguard or no crossguard, there are a lot of human elements moving all in that area, and we're about to come to slick roads, et cetera. And so, any caution that the community can help us with would be greatly appreciated. And please cooperate completely with the crossing guard, because you'll have to learn that routine, and they'll have to learn that routine. Okay?
Would it also be-
Would it also be something to look into, possibly putting stop signs, maybe even temporary stop signs? Could that be something we could get up during those hours with the crossing guard being there? As a parent goes through, I would notice.
I would want to, I'd want to meet with the city and have them analyze traffic flows to know, because one of the problems is that if we have a stop sign, we may never be able to get parents out of the loop, unless the stop sign is previous to the loop.
Right.
And we alternate. But that would take the police and their safety council looking at it with us. But since it's all part of our campus, I'm sure we could be a player in whatever we tried to do there. Mr. Radke, you live that, I don't. Is there a series of stop signs that could help create a rhythm?
I think it would take a stoplight. A series of stoplights.
Stop. Okay.
Because that's what Mrs. Willamson does right now, is she is the stoplight for all intersections. She doesn't just come and walk the kids across, she's also telling which cars to go where.
Which is why we can't have a student do it. It is a complicated corner. Okay? I just realized, Mr. Radke did not have a microphone, so for the benefit of our, that's all right, for the benefit of our audience, Mrs. Willamson has been trying to extend her supervision down there and create not just a crosswalk, but direct traffic from the four different directions. And so, what Mr. Radke said is that we might even have to look at something like a temporary stoplight that is only used during the exchange times, something like that. Just wanted you all to be aware that we do have a concern there, and we're working on it. That's my superintendent's report, unless there's more questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent?
The transfers? I'll repeat it, but I'm going to yield to Mr. Radke to tell you the two hotspot times that that's a big issue. Thank you, Mike.
Like 7:30 to 7:40, and then again after school, from right when the middle school gets out at 3:25 till about, I mean, as early as 3:40, it's clear. They go through pretty quickly, but it is busy during those times.
I think the middle school's the last one of all of our schools that gets out of school, right? The high school gets out at 3:15, the buses are pulling in about 3:20, and the middle school's getting out at approximately 3:20, and that's really when it starts. Anything else for Mr. Radke on this issue while you have him at the podium?
Quick question, sorry. So, I go to the high school. So, are we talking about the, so in the big parking lot, the two sections where you come out of the big parking lot where you can't turn in?
It's the area that is, the crosswalk that is closest to Tiger Stadium, where students are exiting and mostly turning right or turning north, because it's close to the loop on the east side of the middle school, and then kids coming across is, that's, and Ms. Willamson will tell everyone, she's not worried about the high school students. She says over and over, they are more cautious than they need to be looking for little kids. She said she's actually more worried about the north-south parents that are coming and trying to get in and get on, and she's very, very happy with the high school students and their exiting of the parking lot. But it is, it's just a very serious area of congestion and concern.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent on his report? Seeing none, we'll now move over to Mr. Christopherson for a facilities report.
This report, the tenure board packet tonight, is in support of your board goals, that we keep our facilities maintained and in order. And as I've told the board leading up to this, we're getting behind on some of our maintenance, particularly at the high school. The high school building was built in 1967. We did some upgrades on it in about 2009, when we put several million dollars into the building. At that time, we did the kitchen and the auditorium and built the link. So, it's been 10 years, and we're having trouble keeping up with all the maintenance items, just using our capital-outlay fund. So, what I've done tonight is kind of give you a list of what those things are that we have identified so far. And it's not just the high school, it's, and we'll go through these quickly, but we talked many times about the need for a secure entrance and a little office reconfiguration at the high school and at the middle school. The rooftop units on the high school is a series of 15 rooftop units that we've been working on swapping some out, but they all need to be swapped out. The student bathrooms need to be refreshed at the high school. The auditorium stage lighting and sound system need to be replaced. We have parking lot repair on the west side of the high school and the driveway and stuff that lead up to the link from the west. We have an area that needs some tuck-pointing. The commons and the west hallways have asbestos floor tile that needs to be replaced, and the commons needs to be spruced up a little with maybe some paint and ceiling tile. Our intercom system's not working in the high school, and the phone system needs to be replaced. We think that could be, maybe work them together and use the intercom system through the phone, through a new phone system. Science lab needs some countertops and other updates. Interior doors need to be brought up to modern building codes. Not to say that they're not at building code, but they have been modified to get to building codes, so now they're in, kind of in rough shape. We have areas of ceiling tile, carpet, paint, security cameras. We need some updated and better cameras that are more at face level so we can identify faces. That's what we have in the high school so far. We think we need to spruce up the bathrooms, the student bathrooms also in the vocational building. And then at the middle school, I mentioned the secure entrance, office reconfiguration. We need to work a little bit in the bathrooms for some better privacy at the middle school. And we've often talked about a sports floor in the middle school auxiliary gym to improve the safety in that facility. So, so far, that's what we have on the list. So, why I wanted to give this report tonight was to see if the board is ready to proceed to the next step, which would be seeking an architect to help us with this and identify what the project could look like and what some of these costs would be, so that the board is better equipped to decide if they could move ahead with any of this. I didn't think it needed to be an action item. I thought maybe I could just get the general consensus on whether you wanted me to bring a proposed contract for architectural services to you to address these issues.
I think it's worth exploring, at least. How long has the intercom system not been working at the high school?
Since I've been there, there's been progressively more and more speakers that have gone out. So, I mean, this is my eighth year in the district. I know of three classroom speakers that don't work and a handful that are in the hallways or other public areas.
Okay, so it's the speakers that are failing?
Yep.
Well, I certainly think it's needed to be explored. I think we need to get an architect and see what the costs of these will be. Some of our goals are the security of the schools and looking into security issues and the high school and the middle school or two that we could certainly look at fixing those.
I would agree with what everybody else has been saying. I mean, I think, too, just having updated, modern-looking facilities that students like to go and be at will help with learning and just the aesthetics of some of that, and having things that are there working properly.
When you said front door and office reconfiguration, are you talking, putting the front entrance through the office, or are those two separate items?
I do believe that's some of our goal, is to see what state-of-the-art high schools in South Dakota are looking like. I don't really have the answer, but yes, to incorporate more like we have in the elementaries, where you can force the traffic into the offices during the day if need be.
I would agree that it's definitely worth exploration. It is, oh, thank you very much.
I'd agree that it's definitely worth exploration, that, you know, it's the building that's due for some work on it. Obviously, you know, we want to probably make sure it fits within our capital-outlay budget as it currently exists, now that we're more capped on that, so we can do it without having to do any bond issuing or anything like that, so keep it within our current tax levies.
I should also say one thing that's kind of motivating this is the price tag of a new high school. The price tag of a new-